Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 16th Foxborough School Committee Meeting. We have a full house tonight and a really great teaching and learning highlight that we're looking forward to. To start, do we have anyone here for our open public comment period? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on quickly to approval of minutes. And we just have one set. It's our December 2nd, 2019 meeting, regular meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or comments on the regular meeting minutes from December 2nd? Anyone? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the December 2nd minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Oh, wow, dueling seconds. Thank you both. Any further discussion? I'll let Janet decide who came in first on that. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, 5-0-0. Thank you. So, moving on, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but I think everyone's here. We have a full house for our Teaching and Learning Highlight, which involves Technology Integration Innovative Instructional Strategies. We have Mr. Dan Ambrosio and Ms. Darlene Reed, our Technology Integration Specialists, and Dr. Maura Rogers, and a whole bunch of Taylor Elementary School students and their families. So, welcome to all of you. And, Dr. Berdos, you want to introduce everybody?
I would love to. So, we were expecting you at the last school committee meeting, and we had weather that came into play. So, we've had this to look forward to for two weeks, which is even that much more exciting.
Yes, and you notice, we postponed the weather until midnight tonight, so you'll all be very safe.
So, our Technology Integration Specialist, Ms. Reed, works with all three elementary schools, and Mr. Ambrosio works at the middle school. And so, they are here with their fabulous students and the teachers that they work with to talk about some of the integration strategies that take place in the classroom. So, they've got some really exciting things to share with us. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Reed. And Dr. Rogers as well, too.
And Dr. Rogers, yeah. So, we are excited to have this opportunity just to share with you some of the things that we are doing with green screen technology to support the curriculum at the elementary level. We began using it last year, the end of last year, for recycling projects where students created PSAs, and we're expanding on that use this year. So, we have our wonderful 4th grade students from Taylor. They are from both Ms. Curran's class and Ms. Sykes' class. So, I will have you all just say your name to introduce yourself. So, we've got Austin, please. And this is grade four students, yeah. So, just state your name to introduce yourself.
I'm Austin.
I'm Jake.
I'm Sammy.
I'm Sahil.
I'm Maddie.
I'm Chloe.
Welcome to all of you. Did anyone come in? We started a couple minutes earlier than usual. Did anyone else come in who needs to come up to the table? Just want to make sure. Okay, all right.
I think we've got everybody here.
Thank you.
So, if you're not familiar, green screen technology, basically what we are doing is recording students in front of a green screen. And then, we use an app, a green screen app, we have the Do Ink app, that allows us to really replace that green background with any picture or image that we want for our project. So, we become superimposed into really any setting that we want. So, the possibilities for that are really almost limitless. We can report as meteorologists in a newsroom. We can be pilgrims, talking about our daily lives in a 17th-century cottage. Or, we can be talking about the solar system as an astronaut standing on the moon. So, it's really, you know, it allows us to be very creative, and what students come up with is pretty exciting. So, we have just been working on a landmark unit. So, the projects that our 4th graders here have been involved in is reporting on a specific landmark. And so, just to, we have those projects to share with you tonight. So, just to maybe introduce those projects, would you like each of you to just say what your landmark is? And then, maybe just a brief comment about the process or something that stands out to you.
My landmark was Mount Washington, and the project starts with looking up facts in our social studies notebooks or on the Internet for scripts.
My landmark was the West Quoddy Head Lighthouse in Maine, and I liked it because we got to do it over and over and edit it and look at pictures for the background with my partners.
My landmark was Ground Zero, and even though the green project was really cool, the project took a lot of time and effort.
My landmark was the Erie Canal, and what I thought was cool is that you can shrink and move your group to anywhere in the image.
My landmark was Ground Zero, and I liked rehearsing and looking up pictures of Ground Zero and the Freedom Tower.
My project was Ground Zero, and I liked that we can research with our friends and partners and just have fun with it.
So, a lot of work really does go into these projects. Students are doing research about their topic, they're writing scripts and incorporate the facts that they found. They are working together really to kind of work out a vision for these projects, and then video recording, of course. And after they video record, they come around to the other side of the camera, and they're reviewing it, they're checking their recording for, you know, self-assessing fluency and their overall presentation. They're re-recording if they feel like there's something they want to change with their presentation. So, it's a lot of collaboration. Students really own this process. They are really, for us as teachers, where we are just guiding them, and they really are self-driven projects. So, with that said, let's just see what they've created.
And this is the Erie Canal.
Whoa, how long is it?
The Erie Canal is 340 miles long and 40 feet wide.
They could take some good pictures here. Why don't you tell us about its history first?
Sure, it was made from 1817 to 1825.
Where does the water come from?
Yeah, I know it goes to the Erie Canal.
Where is the water coming from?
It comes from the Hudson River, and it links the Northeast and Midwest regions.
Was it made by machines?
No, they had machines, but it was handmade.
Cool, that must have been hard.
Yeah. It took 83 locks to carry books across the Atlantic Ocean.
What's a lock?
A lock is like a water elevator used to raise and lower books.
Cool. Bye.
Wait a second. I can get to take a picture.
Selfie time.
Bye. For real this time.
Wow, that mountain is beautiful. It is so crazy that it snows 280 to 14 inches every year. I'm glad that's true.
Yeah, honey, that made me really tired. Looks like there's only one mountain, but it was still worth it. I'm really tired from the hike. I think I'm just going to sit down around here.
Yeah, me too.
Chloe.
Let's explore. Did you know that 600 to 288 feet high Mount Washington is the highest peak in the Northeast?
Cool.
Coming when it melts.
It's awesome that it snows here all year round.
Wait, I think I forgot my backpack. I'm going to walk.
I'll walk with you.
I think it's time to say goodbye now.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Well, goodbye for now, see you later. Bye.
Wow, that was a long hike. I can see the lighthouses.
But I'll know it's worth it.
This is the West Quoddy Head Lighthouse.
This lighthouse is a Rubik man game in the Northeast, and it was built in 1808.
This lighthouse is a reminder of the President of the Civil.
The lighthouse has a flower corner and big lights.
Wow, that must be loud.
I heard there's visitor's center in the West Quoddy Head, from out of it to visit the park after.
Did you know the ones that don't need five hundred years?
That means we have to sign that.
Cool. These are some awesome facts about the West Quoddy Head Lighthouse.
Wow, look at these buildings. They look huge.
Yeah, why is that big hole in there?
It's Ground Zero, it's a memorial of 9/11.
Oh, I remember, Jake talked about. That was the day the Twin Towers.
Yes, it was. Did you know there are many fast valves in Twin Towers?
I don't want to take it away.
Sure. Both buildings reach 1,360 feet tall.
I bet you do not know they were all located apart.
These cratered Ground Zero has at least 500 names on it.
This is the Freedom Tower. It is another memorial of the Freedom Tower. Did you know this is a tall building in New York? Another name for the Freedom Tower in the Monroe area.
I can see City Bus.
Me too. Time to go.
See you at the next landmark.
Great job, everybody.
Yeah, they did a wonderful job, and it was really nice to kind of watch them in their process, and they were just, really lots of ideas. They just did a wonderful job throughout the project, so.
It's a quick video, but it takes a long time to put it all together, right?
Oh, yes.
Lot of work. All the research.
I bet you guys learned a lot from each other from watching one another's videos and working together as groups.
Fourth grade projects have come a long way in the last eight years since my last foray into 4th grade with my children. This is amazing, really impressive.
And I think that it's when we talk about instructional strategies, to have collaboration and really creating more content, to be connected with your peers and work together and to be able to produce something in the end, that something like that is a little bit different than maybe what you would write on paper. So, did you find that more motivating as you worked together? What was the best part? Anybody?
Probably filming it.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Filming it.
Filming it. Anybody else, a different one?
I also liked filming it.
You did?
It was fun filming it, but it took a lot of, like, tries, and it took a long time to get it right. It was fun, like, editing it and moving our characters around to see.
You could probably teach me something. I don't know how to do that.
So exciting.
Yeah, I have to say, too, with the editing, they really kind of critiqued their videos, and they had high expectations for themselves, and they wanted to redo it, and so it was something.
How many times did you have to redo it? Was it like two, three, four, or?
With me, it was like five.
You did a great job. Brent, did you have a question?
Were you editing it in the camera, or were you using, doing so on the computer?
First, we filmed the video, and then we looked over the video and we edited it.
So, lots of different skills used there. So, now, are we going to hear from those that are the next step up to see what you're going to be doing in middle school, so you get to watch, to hear from them as well?
Well, thank you, 4th graders. Nice job, 4th graders. Good evening.
Thank you for having us. We're all very excited to be here. My name is Dana Brozio. I'm the Technology Integration Specialist at Dehern Middle School. I'm here with Mrs. Samantha Walsh. She's a teacher leader in 6th grade, Math and Science. And then, we have a few students here. Do you want to go ahead and introduce yourselves?
I'm Morgan.
I'm Kim.
I'm Jack.
I'm Annabelle.
Are you all the same grade?
Yeah.
They're all in 6th grade. So, I felt compelled to share this with you tonight, because it started before school. One day, I was walking in the 6th grade hallway, ran into a girl who's at her locker. She was on her device. I asked her what she was doing. She told me she was filling out a digital survey. Of course, I asked what it was about, so I learned a little bit more. You see right there, it's very simple. It's just a name, how are you doing this morning? And then, they're asked to self-identify their zone of regulation, which we'll hear a little bit about more in a second. But this struck me as a very innovative way to apply a very simple technology tool, to teach kids a little bit about social-emotional learning and how to regulate themselves to make sure they're ready to actually learn. Speaking for myself, I know I could have used this in 6th grade.
I could use this now, so this is wonderful. I hope you're going to read the questions.
Yeah, so we can read and talk about it, but I will turn it over to the expert.
So, I came from the elementary school, and I saw these zones of regulations, and they use them a lot for the younger kids. And, you know, we've got the different colors, and the kids can identify how they're feeling. And so, I thought, you know, from going from elementary to middle school, I saw the kids still had the same struggle sometimes. It's like, you know, you don't just magically sit still in middle school. If anything, it's kind of the opposite a little bit. So, I was thinking it would be a great way to help these students learn how to get through the day, understand where they're at, you know. Our board says, "How are you?" It's not necessarily, "What zone are you in?" We're not using the colors like they are there necessarily. Do you have those? Oh, that, perfect. So, I want the students in the morning to recognize, how are they feeling? What zone are you in? So, there's the green, the yellow, the blue, and the red. Green zone is kind of the ideal where we all want to be calm, happy, ready to learn. And then, yellow, excited, worried, maybe really silly, wiggly, they can't sit still. Blue is where you're more tired, sad or bored. And red is maybe more angry, you're feeling a little bit frustrated. So, we kind of go throughout the day. I'll tell them what zone I'm in, and I'm like, "I'm maybe a little blue right now. Can you maybe tell me how I can get back to the green so I can be ready myself?" So, I started the survey so that, you know, at middle school, it's kind of a little bit social where they're not necessarily willing to share out loud how they're feeling. So, the survey allows them to communicate anonymously with me about where they're at first thing in the morning. Sometimes, we're checking off all the boxes, and then I'm like, "Okay, I know where you're at right now." You're all those zones at one time. And sometimes, people are green every day, but it's a really great way for me to see, this kid's blue every day in the morning. How can we help them? And not necessarily in front of everyone, but I can support them one-on-one or later in the day, where we can figure out, how can we get them to the green zone? And also, through the survey, I don't know if you have that up there, too.
Yep.
Do you have the examples of the kids?
Oh, yeah.
That's okay. So, you'll notice that they'll be able to share with how they're feeling in the morning, which zone they're in, and then they're able to share anything else they want me to know. I made the "anything else you want me to know" a required question. At first, it wasn't, but I thought maybe, I mean, they can just write, "No, there's nothing else they want me to know." But it's nice to be able to connect with them. And so, you'll notice, there's a couple examples up there. Someone was able to tell me they had a fever yesterday, but they still feel really sick. Someone said they had to go to a funeral tomorrow, so they won't be at school. So, when they're not at school that day, I can know why they're not there. You know, sometimes, you're like, "Oh, where were you yesterday?" And that will help me understand that's where they were. The, oh, somebody was saying they're excited, they might have a sleepover. Again, that's a way I can connect and say, "Are you so excited for your sleepover?" And it just helps with the relationship, but also for me to understand where they are. So, I think there's more examples. But we have more strategies than just the check-in, and these students came here, they're some students that really use these strategies well, and they wanted to share what they do and how it helps them throughout the day. So, you guys want to share what you have? Listen up, Annabelle. We'll go down the line.
I enjoy using the noise-canceling headphones, because when other classmates move on to my do's in that workshop, I can concentrate on my musts, my musts do's.
I like using breaks, because sometimes I feel off task, and I am off task most of the time, and they help me regain my focus.
I like the wobble stool, because I'm very fidgety, and it helps me, like, get away some of my energy.
I like the check-in survey, so I can tell my teachers how I'm feeling and if I need any support throughout the day.
So, the zones are really for them in the morning to say, address where they are feeling. And then, I do have the posters up to say, like, if they are in the red zone, how can we get back to the green? We also, Jack was mentioning the breaks we have outside in the hallway, some posters that share, "If you're feeling revved up, how can you calm yourself down?" There's a jump rope out there. Sometimes, you do planks. Sometimes, one's jump roping, and I'm saying, "You got a plank," the whole time they're jump roping. So, it can be a little bit competitive, but it's just a five-minute break, come back in. And what do you guys think? Does it help you get back?
I mean, I think like 15-minute breaks.
It's normally five. So, does the 15-minute break help you, do you think?
Usually not.
Oh, all right.
I love the hardware that my child can do jump roping really well.
Oh, that's nice. What else do you guys think?
I also like the yoga mats on the floor. Because like I can, like, lay on my belly and do math, because it helps me keep track, too.
It's a great idea. I wish I had this in elementary school. I think I would have been way more focused. It's really good.
Also, what Annabelle said about the yoga mats, a few days ago, I turned myself into a burrito.
In the mat?
Yeah, with the yoga mats. And then, I turned myself into a taco, and I was acting like a taco, like 10 minutes.
Oh, good. Well, I mean, it's a great way, too, just to get energy out and to be able to come back in and refocus.
Or be a taco.
Or be a taco, whatever you got to do to get back on track, get back to the green zone.
So, do you think these strategies are going to help you next year when you go to 7th grade? I know it's a long ways away now, but still, you think you're learning a lot about, you know, helping yourself get out of a bad mood or refocus your attention?
Yeah, sometimes.
Yeah, that's great. Any other questions? Anything else you guys want to tell us? We're so glad you could come and share this with us. I had no idea this was happening in 7th grade. This is great.
I think there's some really good examples of how technology's being used very differently, and something as simple as noise-canceling headphones, what a difference it can make. Or being able to build the relationships with your students by something in a way that you're able to connect that you wouldn't have known before. And we know that it's so important to have relationships. That is key, and to be able to share that and to check in, that really makes a difference.
Absolutely.
I think we have a question.
As a parent of a child who's using this, I, when I first learned about it, I was blown away. I was really blown away, and immediately comforted by it, knowing that my child can learn how to advocate for himself, speak for himself, and have a bond with his teachers. And I didn't have to email or say something, "He had a bad day yesterday," or, "His pet died," or, you know, he can do that for himself. And so, I thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Thank you so much.
Well, these kids are great.
Thank you. Thank you for chiming in. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Cam does a great job. All of you guys do.
I would say, one of the things that's been, we talked at last school committee meeting about some teachers having to change grades, and it's not ideal from a curriculum perspective. And it's great that you took your knowledge from the elementary school, brought it up, recognized a similar need, if not a greater need, in our middle school students. And actually, Ms. Walsh will be leading a professional development in conjunction with a 1st-grade teacher on these self-regulation strategies on our PD Day for teachers who want to learn more about this. So, we're very excited about that.
I have a question, Ms. Walsh. Do all of your kids have phones? And if they don't have a phone, do you have another way that you communicate with them?
Yes, great question. So, we do have iPads for our grade. They're actually housed in my classroom. But if not, they're able to use the desktop computers, they just take turns. We do it in homeroom, or?
I figured there was an option there.
Yeah, absolutely. And it does, some of them do it right before school, or they'll do it on the bus, or, like I said, right in homeroom. So, it takes like, you know, three questions, about five minutes if that. And so, it's a really great way. It's interesting for me to just read how they're feeling, or even if it's something happy and exciting, it's a great way for me to say, "Oh, my God, how excited are you for this?" Or, "Great job with this." And so, it's fun for me to look and read them.
Thank you for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight. And thank you all, all the families who came. You do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. I'm sure you're grateful for that. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. So, is there any, does anybody else have anything else they want to? Both wonderful examples of use of technology. Just give everybody a minute to clear out.
I love it. So, I was a taco. And then, no, but that changed the focus. You'd get outside of it, and that's wonderful.
What do you guys, our student representatives, while we're waiting for everybody to clear out, what do you think of this? Do you think this would have been something you might have found helpful in 6th grade?
Yeah. I like the coolest part for me was like the break part, because even now, I'm like 18, and I still like to get up and walk around in the middle of class.
Yes, there's a jump rope in the hallway for you, yeah?
Our bodies were not meant to sit the way we do it. Any people that have office jobs, our bodies just weren't made to do that.
You should put jump ropes in office jobs.
Yeah. Can't do school committee meetings. Maybe we need a break.
Or next time I walk by your classes, I'll have you come out and do a plank for me. See how long you can hold it.
Okay. So, we are, now that everybody has moved on to other things, we can move on to our next agenda item, which is the Director of Special Education proposed title change. Dr. Berdos?
Yes. So, our person that oversees special education, the title is Director of Special Education. And that is Dr. Einzel, who is here with us this evening as well.
I see.
So, what we're proposing, and this actually came from her, so she's, if you're welcome to have her come up as well. So, changing the title to Director of Student Services is more, it's really more in line of what her responsibilities are within the role. And the Director of Special Education title is a little bit old-school, if you will. And although, for school committee, whenever we have a new position, your role is to approve a new job description, if it's a new position. This is not a new position, but it's just changing the title, so that way, it's more current. It also brings continuity of services when we think about student services. And I put in what we have as, it's a draft job description for us, because we're actually going to be looking at it again at our administrator meeting on Wednesday. But the reason here is because it will more accurately reflect our present-day duties of what Dr. Einzel oversees. It's much more than special education. So, when we think of a student that might not have an IEP, and they are out of school, they're hospitalized and need tutoring services or something like that, that's a student service. It goes all through her office. So, that's an example. 504s, which is not special education, she also oversees that as well. So, changing the title, she is retiring at the end of this school year, so we do wish her the very best for very well-deserved retirement.
Dr. Einzel, would you come up to the table for us? Would you mind? At this point, I would think we all want to wish you well and tell you, congratulations on your decision, but we're going to miss you very, very much.
And so, at this point, where we would be going out in, after the new year, to advertise for her position, because it's going to be a long process, that we'll have a lot of people involved, we'll be asking for school committee representation on that large committee as well. In order to advertise for that position, we wanted it to be much more in line of what the actual responsibilities are. So, that is why I'm coming to you for your vote to change the title from Director of Special Education to Director of Student Services. In addition to all of the responsibilities that she already oversees within the district when it comes to, like, as another example, translation services for our English-language learners. Oversight of the ELL program itself is actually under the Assistant Superintendent, and many districts, it's under the Director of Student Services. So, that's another part that we're discussing, where we have translation services that are already going through her office, to be more where she's the point person for our English-language learner population as well.
Other than that, is there anything in the performance responsibilities that are listed that is different from the current position?
No, there's not.
Really a change in title?
It's a change in title, other than the English-language learner piece, which, when It's a change in title, other than the English language learner piece, which when she came on board, our population was not what it is.
No, I know. It has changed dramatically.
Before, even when we go back to when Dr. Burden was here as well. So I don't, I don't know, um Dr. Einzel, if you wanna add anything as far as looking at Director of Student Services when we talk about more with the times as far as the.
I think, I think that one of the things I was talking to Amy about, um before, Dr. Burden's about, before um I decided to retire is I really think that it reflects what the department does. And I think you're gonna get a bigger, um and a broader section of people applying for the position because it is more in line with what is currently the title is is supposed to be. So I think this is a good idea.
Appreciate the advice.
But it's definitely special education focused.
Oh, yes.
That, that, that is the the primary responsibility, but we have these other areas that fall under student services as well, which she she does now and has since the day she stepped into Foxborough.
Right.
I very much agree with it. My exposure to the schools that I have, I see this title very commonly now, so, cause this is what they're doing. They're doing far more than just special education. As a matter of fact, it doesn't really work for all the things, does it?
Exactly.
Doesn't work at all for all the the range of things, so.
And you might see it different in some districts. It might be Director of Pupil Personnel.
Exactly. Yep.
Does anyone else have any, anything? Would we like to entertain a motion to approve the change in title to Director of Student Services?
I would like to make that motion to change our present Director of Special Education title to read Director of Student Services to better encompass all the responsibilities that are listed to fulfill that position.
Thank you, Beverly.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that's five zero zero. Thank you. And thank you. And we're gonna miss you, but I'm glad you're here through the end of the year.
Definitely, yes.
Absolutely.
We are as well.
I understand your decision, but I was disappointed to read about it. I was hoping it wasn't going to happen quite so soon.
Well, thank you very much.
You will be missed.
Thank you.
Yes.
And hard, and hard to find.
Thanks, thank you. Yes, I, I think we're gonna be discussing some, some more, so you're welcome to stay as we segue from this into our continued discussion of the proposed fiscal year twenty-one budget with Dr. Berdows and Mr. Yukna. And Dr. Einzel is here to talk about the special education portion of the budget, which is impactful. So I will let you all take it away.
Okay. So at our, at our last meeting, it was a very general discussion and we had talked about how we were framing the budget discussion in two areas. It had to do with enrollment, our declining enrollment that we've seen over a number of years and how it's starting to impact at the middle school level. And then the other area is special education. So we were going to go through this presentation with you this evening and and talk about where the focus as far as in building this budget. So each of the slides are numbered. We made sure so that way if we need to turn back and forth, it'll be a little bit easier. So the FY twenty-one budget, it proposes a budget that is based on students and educational services to maintain the services for students. But it also acknowledges our shifting population and our s- our decline that has been taking place at the elementary level. And we're starting now to see that reach the middle school level. The budget is also, it reflects the priorities of our strategic plan with all four of our objectives. And again, that is to develop responsible global citizens with learning experiences, with providing them with a rigorous curriculum, high levels um that fosters high levels of achievement for students. Continue to strengthen the culture and ensuring that students, staff and parents and all stakeholders feel valued, safe and have a voice. To enhance the district infrastructure and technological capabilities to provide an increasingly safe and supportive physical and innovative academic school environment. And the fourth objective, to maintain strong support for public education in Foxborough. So this budget that we're presenting here at this first conversation, as we know, this will continue into January with multiple meetings as well. It maintains reasonable class sizes. It preserves our current programs and services to students and takes steps to move the district's academic and strategic initiatives forward. It also addresses the increasing needs in special education and responds to areas such in the area of health with a nurse at point four at the high school that we'll talk about in a little bit. And then again, addressing and responding to the slight decreases that we see in enrollment that are now starting to hit the middle school level. It does continue to address the increased cost of technology tools and solutions, which obviously are critical to education. You heard that is even some, some of the strategies with our teaching and learning um highlight this evening. And it enables us to meet the state guidelines across all aspects of public education. So the process itself, looking for um requests for, that are presented by schools and program areas, looking at what our current programs are, being able to maintain our programs that we currently offer. It also has to assume the hundred and twenty-five thousand from retirements that comes off right from the very beginning. At this point in time, we don't know what our retirements will be and will not know. It could be until the very end of the school year. And then also the grant revolving accounts offset salaries and expenses included for any known reductions in grants in the revolving account are included as well. So when we go back to the meeting that we had with the Board of Selectmen, um at, at that meeting, we were given our direction as far as as um a department in the town of what the framework for the town is.
I think the, obviously the biggest issue here is we have a focus of, of um the three and a half percent um being the one point two million dollars that the Board of Selectmen has basically put out there. Our problem is dealing with the movement within our budget area. So what we did was we developed a budget that had a philosophy on looking at enrollments, controlling or minimizing our expense increases, um and then dealing with um, you know, other issues that came up and that have to be addressed as we move forward.
Legal and contractual obligations.
Exactly.
So when we look at what's new in the school budget, so there's been staff adjustments that have happened after the FY twenty budget was approved. And that was responding again to enrollment that was there. The enrollment, special education IEPs impacted some of those adjustments as well as any students that moved in to the district. Looking at caseloads for our service providers and then looking at teaching positions as an example. Kindergarten registration starts in January. Not all students register in January. That continues and we watch those numbers throughout the year. And it can be into the summertime, quite honestly, before we know what our kindergarten classes are going to look like. So after the budget was approved last year at that time, we had some of those shifts. For example, we had two kindergarten classes. I'm going to just flip to this next slide to make it a little bit easier to talk about. So we had an additional kindergarten that was added at the Taylor due to the numbers um of registrations, the same thing at the IGO.
Registrations that occurred after we put our budget request.
Right. Understanding, we put our budget, you know, at this point in the year, again, we don't even have registrations until, starting until January. And and as Dr. Burden said, a lot of them, don't even do it then, they'll, they'll continue to come through. So we have a, a size for kindergartens that we try to stay within. Um and the, the problem becomes, again, with neighborhood district schools, your division of, of class sizes becomes a little bit trickier because they're not all in one location. So we can't really make those decisions till we see the, the full impact of, of what the registrations will be. Some, you know, people move in in the summertime. It's a, you know, spring to summer is one of the biggest move in periods. So again, you don't even have those people on your registration sites.
Okay. So another example, when you see a minus grade four teacher at IGO and a plus one grade one teacher at Burl. So we ended the year last year because of students moving in in our kindergarten classes at twenty-four. And typically we'll have students that will even move in for first grade afterwards. Our numbers for grade four at the IGO were such that it was more beneficial from a student perspective to have a teacher to go from the IGO with those class sizes where they would have been lower, to then take where we had two kindergarten classes moving into first grade. So we wouldn't have more than twenty-four students in a first grade classroom. So that's why you see we had a grade four teacher that not only changed grade levels from fourth grade to teaching first grade, but also moved schools. Our occupational therapist at the IGO is a point nine. In order to meet the service delivery for our students, we would have had to have brought in an outside consultant if we did not increase that this current school year to by the point one to where we are at a one point O FTE. And then based on that declining enrollment at the elementary level, when you have eight classes and before we had ten classes at grade five with those enrollment numbers, we collapsed to fifth grade teachers, knowing that with the retirements that we had last year, we hired um for sixth grade, actually long-term subs, knowing that we were going to be collapsing to sixth grade classrooms the following year because those enrollment numbers have declined.
And what that basically did was kept our class sizes consistent at the middle school level. You know, as far as going from ten to eight sections. Um but obviously in the seventh and eighth grade, we're still in the, the larger sections because we still have more kids in the, in those levels.
And then our point, at the middle school, we have a full-time nurse and then we have a point four nurse. And that's been in place for, for years. But we've not had that at the high school. And many times we are bringing in a, a sub nurse when we have screenings or, or different things that take place. The acuity of care at the high school level has increased to such where we need the equity across the middle school and the high school when we think of the students and what they're presenting. And so this year we have put in a long-term sub just at that point four to be able to meet the increasing needs. And we've tracked that data for the last two years to see what those, those numbers, um what it looks like on a daily basis at the time of day. And really being able to meet the number of students, whether we have students that, you know, seizure disorders, diabetes, there, there's a, there's a whole host of different needs that we need to be able to meet.
Right. And a lot of that, the, the, what it would happen would be at the lunchtime period specifically because of the different medications and things people need. The crunch on one individual was too high, especially if one child was at risk at that particular time, you still had all the others that you needed to address. That's been happening at the middle school for a longer period of time, but now it's, it's becoming, obviously these kids are now moving up.
Right.
So the same kids that have those issues now are in the high school level and it created this additional concern on our side and, and through the nursing department as well that, you know, um making sure that we address the issues of the children that are at risk.
Makes sense.
So with that, after the, the budget had been approved, with those adjustments, what you saw where we have, and again, that's a long-term sub for this year, is a point five as far as a net increase with the point one OT and the point four nurse.
For FY twenty?
FY twenty.
So they were not, and I think this is kinda, I, I think we're probably spelling this out a little bit clearer maybe than we've done in the past. But we go in projecting our budget, projecting our staffing levels based on what we know at the time we're doing, November and December. But we are also very critical looking at the process and saying what, you know, when things start to change, have they changed in other places too? So that's where this, this evaluation of the staffing goes through. Obviously, we have regulations in which we have to do things by certain times as well. Um but it's a constant process. This is not like the first time we've ever done this, obviously. We do this on a regular basis. Um important to understand that, though.
So just going back to the previous slide, so the other part that's new in the school budget this year is based on this point in time and looking at the needs of our special education students and programming. The students that are coming in from either move, students that move to Foxborough, that would be in our in-district programs or students that we have here that are going from preschool as an example into a therapeutic program. So we have one teacher in the therapeutic program over at Taylor, based on kindergarten through fourth grade, the number of students and the wide variety of needs. In order to be able to continue to meet the needs in the least restrictive environment in the district, having a second therapeutic teacher would be able to help retain those students within the district. And um when you think about the IGO hour program that we have there, we have two teachers, like one works with K to two students and then the other works with three to four students.
And I think that's, that's the, the important thing is, is the grade differential.
It's the regulation.
You can't teach one to four really, you know, appropriately. And, and that's how these programs are starting to expand, that we need to make sure that we are, are addressing each of those levels.
And it's also by the regulations you can't have.
Compliance, yes.
It's a compliance issue.
So this would be for the coming budget year.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, starting with the increases below, that's, that's talking about the, the next year.
And.
What we were trying to do is just set the stage for what changes happened from what you saw last year to now what are we doing in this year's budget?
Got it.
And then accompanying there with those and then with IEPs of students that come in, the educational assistant that you see there, that's a program requirement. When we had, based on the enrollment that was smaller at grade four that I was talking about before and that student was at Burl, we have four third grade classes at IGO and we currently have three fourth grade classes at IGO. We need to have the additional teacher in fourth grade for those students coming in. Now, we have currently four kindergarten classrooms at IGO. We're budgeting for that, but it could be depending on numbers, like the year before, we had three kindergarten classrooms. But we have to put in here what could end up.
And our kindergarten classrooms at the IGO are about what size now? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just, just to give us an idea of how.
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
So they're at the upper end of the ideal class size that, that we know that families want.
We're comfortable in that twenty range because you also have an assistant in the room.
The assistant, right. We have a teacher and an, an assistant in the classroom, so. Okay, um Joe had a question before we move on to the next thing. Did you wanna say something, Joe?
Sure. Um, Joe Garrity, by the way. And then another thing when you, um age of the programs, you have to take into consideration the forty-eight months between K and four, one and four, just like at the high school, sometimes if the freshman is younger, then the senior is the oldest.
Right.
And then another thing that's, the reason why we're adding this, for the teen program at the elementary is just to have it the same way as the eight-ten program, two teachers, right?
That's right. Joe, great point. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So we have seen over the last number of years, this slight decrease that we've talked about at the elementary level. And it's starting to reach, just talking about the fifth grade and the sixth grade. So if you have four less homeroom classrooms in fifth grade and sixth grade, students that go to special areas such as world language and wellness and art, et cetera, they have three times a cycle. So if you have four less classrooms, that's going to impact those other areas. So you see a one point seven total FTE, which is a point four reduction for world language, a point four for art, a point four for technology education and a point five for wellness. When we've looked at all of those classes and how that, because we have to have kids in order to be in those classrooms. The other one that you see there is a math teacher for the Ahearn. We currently have a math teacher that serves both seventh and eighth grade students. And based on our enrollment numbers, we can handle that within the two houses.
And some of our eighth grade students are coming to the high school depending on.
And we have a class that comes to the high school as well.
Their abilities from year to year, but.
True.
Okay, alright.
And then moving to the high school, as far as looking at our, again, our enrollment numbers across and looking at maintaining, again, very reasonable class sizes. It would be the reduction of a math teacher, which would bring the department to nine, which is the same as the other departments at the high school. And then the expense budgets have been level funded across.
Just to be clear, reducing a math teacher at the high school would not reduce the course offerings or selections to students and it wouldn't increase the class size any. It's based on current needs and, and.
Looking at our current enrollments across our class sizes, we would be able to maintain class sizes that are, that are extremely reasonable. And it would put the number of teachers in that department, which would be equal to the other departments as well.
The, you know, obviously at the high school level, it's different because it's, each course is signed up like it's when a child goes to college. So a teacher's teaching English and not teaching anything on, on the subjects in general. But when you look at the total numbers for the sciences, the Englishes, you know, um foreign languages and everything, the total in the math is the exact same total as everything else. But yet, there's one more body that's, that's sitting in there. I, I, I wanna be very candid, though, with your question, cause it's gonna come up further as we move on here. When you talk about course offerings, because you're gonna have to be, it's gonna be one of the things you're gonna have to think about as we move forward, is that because we've had um the ability with the number of teachers we've had, we've been able to add courses over the time and not impact, um you know, additional bodies. But when you start to have to tighten up because you don't have the enrollments, um that is something that will be one of the issues that you're gonna face.
So you might not be able to offer certain things every year.
You may not be able to offer every single one of, exactly, or every semester and in the process, so.
But not the core content.
Right, obviously, yeah.
No, no, yeah, not the English, just the.
So looking towards the FY twenty-one budget, as, as far as those were the staffing adjustments, again, level funding, expense budgets, our special education out-of-district tuition enrollment and then transportation that accompanies the out-of-district enrollment. And then this year, we don't have any contract pending for negotiation. So we then wanted to move into talking about special education specifically. This was a slide that we shared with you at the last school committee meeting. So it, it is the, the same slide that you saw before. In the last four years, as we had mentioned, we'd had fifteen students move in to Foxborough that then moved into our district programs, along with any of our own students that the in-district programs would, would best meet their needs because we, our, that's, that's our goal, if we can keep students in the least restrictive environment and have them within our. environment and have them within our district. However, there's times when we can't meet their needs, and they need to go to a school that's going to better meet their needs out of district. But at the same time, if we have students that move into Foxborough and they're already in an out-of-district placement, then by moving, we then assume that out-of-district placement as far as the tuition and the transportation. And in the last four years, we've had 11 students that have moved in that were already in out-of-district placements. And we've had four just this school year, and we actually found out today that we have another one as of today. So, when you see 38 students for FY '21, that's actually going to be 39 students, as of what we've learned today.
You know, I think this, I think this is critical, because these two components and, you know, Sina can, can kind of fill in if anything on this, but having the in-house programs, as, as Dr. Burus has said, is critical to the children, the, the district, but it's also critical from a component point of view, that there are certain things that we can do and we can do well. And as you see, we're doing it for 86, 87 students on, across, you know, K-12, actually across pre-K, because that's what our pre-K system actually is founded on.
Right.
They're not in that number, by the way.
Yeah, they're not.
Pre-K itself is another 40.
Yeah.
As far as these, those children. So, I think what you see here is a, a program that was designed, we've been, we've had other students from other districts come into our programs because we offered it, because it was, you know, again, kind of the least strict, in, in the sense of not having to be, having the child, you know, on a van for 45 minutes a day to go to a program that way. So, our programs are good, but again, we're trying to keep them strong because we also want to make sure that the, the parents and the families feel comfortable that we're doing the right thing for the children. The out-of-district itself really are, and it's, it's interesting when you, you look at our overall list of, of the 33 kids that we currently have, started off at 29 in our budget, and the, you know, 39 that we're going to have going forward, that, you know, again, they're all separate programs. There are very few children going to the same program anywhere, which means it's, they are definitely catered and, and based on those child's, you know, needs.
Specific needs.
Right, so, and the program costs run very similar in most cases unless you get into, you know, residential placements or, or really a special, special need, maybe with medical, you know, additional and stuff like that.
On average, what it's, I mean, if they're.
I, I think if you took our average, you're probably looking at 80 to, to, you know, 100 on the average.
For tuition.
For tuition.
Then you have transportation.
And then transportation.
Transportation, our average is running just under 26,000.
So.
Per child.
Per child.
Yeah.
So per child, that is over 100,000.
So, once the, once the family moves to the town, if it's, if it's a move-in, or once the child is assessed on our side as something that we cannot handle, you know, appropriately, and we're going out, these are the types of costs. And again, each child is placed, not based on the cost of what the program is, but placed on what the child's needs are.
Based on their preference, yeah.
And that's the law itself anyways. The ones that move in are a little trickier because we have had no diagnosis ourselves with them, but we're obviously required to maintain that, and then, over time, get to have a, a second look at that, and say, are they in the right program? Are, is there something we could serve them with? But that takes, that takes time. That's not something that can happen. And we've had a lot of, we've had a success on bringing people out of those other programs and back into our programs, once we could, you know, understand the child's needs. But again, it takes time.
Go ahead, Brent.
For information, are we contracting transportation? Is it our transportation in-house?
So we're, that's a good question. We are, we don't, we transport in district, you know, for children with needs that way. But when it comes to the out-of-district, we are part of the, the BIKO collaborative, and one of the things the BIKO group has done, all of us have gotten together and we have put together a contract with a supplier, so that we, as a larger group, it's almost a $4 million buy between the group of communities that does it. We have a little bit more buying power. But again, it's, when you think about it, in many cases, it's a single van and a single driver. Some cases, if, if there is a route where there might be two schools in a row, and they could pick up somebody from Franklin and then Foxborough and then go, they'll do that. They try to be as efficient as possible. Some children don't do well with a second child in the vehicles, you know, some, some vehicles we could have three and four. So it, it's, the cost share is really all based on how that makeup is, and it, and it does swing to some being very expensive because they're further away and, and some being a little cheaper. I think the, this is kind of a scary thing when you look at it, but it's even scarier on our side because we've had to make some major changes. The FY '20 budget that we are in currently also is facing these move-ins that we're paying for. So, when we budgeted last year for $2.3 million under the out-of-district placements, we are currently running at close to $2.7 million. We have $400,000 that we are needing to pull from within our own budget to make up for that, which is taking a lot of, obviously, a lot of pressure on our side to make different changes. And some of that we are fortunate on because we had a few more retirements than we anticipated during our budget process last year. So that, that's helpful. And, and Dr. Burus was, you know, and the team was able to hire at the lower levels, so it really is where you kind of get your benefit. Some of it's going to take probably some adjustments from our circuit breaker money to make it work, and if, and, you know, the, the odd thing is if you go 25% over your previous year, then there is also some state reimbursements that are possible to get. But we're borderline right now, so we're not sure we're going to get that assistance. Obviously, we're tracking it, we're all going to go to a, a thing that they're going to have in January, February, to make sure that as soon as they open it up, we know we can make sure either we apply or we don't apply, based on whether or not we're going to make the thing. We probably will apply anyways, just to, to try it and hope that, and see how things work. But basically, if you get that, that money will be usable this year. And then obviously, it increases. Circuit breaker funding for these type of things basically falls a year in arrears. So, what we got last year for $690,000 is being spent this year.
This year.
In this year's budget. And that's, so that's how our budgets are built, based on what we know for a fact. If we steal forward, we're stealing forward against a bigger budget in the future.
Right.
That we won't have to pay for. So that's the one precaution that you have to be careful on there.
And you said it's 690 this year?
It's 690, but it's going to be like, you know, potentially based on what we're looking at the following year, could be in the 900,000 range, but again, it's.
From 690 to 900?
Yes, but based on the, the increased overall cost.
Right.
You're going to need that to basically delta fund. It's, you know, you're stealing from, you know, tomorrow to pay for today if you do that.
And with, with that 25, 25%, that's never appropriated, it's just a line?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the, and, and circuit breaker itself, just, again, it's, it's kind of an important thing to understand. Circuit breaker, in, in last year's number, was about 45, say about $45,800. That, once the out-of-district tuition was above that, the, any amount above that, 75% of it came back to you in circuit breaker. So you still paid 25% of it, but you got 75% as additional aid.
Right.
And that's, that's how the state looks at their way of supporting this, the, this program.
Bill, do you want to also talk about the fact that the rate-setting commission sets the rate for these out-of-district placements? But as, as you, it's an ongoing basis, many of the schools say that they're, they're applying for an increase. So, we could be setting a budget on what we think is the, is the tuition, but in six months or in September of next year, it can raise 25% or 50%, which some of the programs have, so it's, it's really difficult.
We have absolutely no control over that.
No, we have no control.
And it's not timed.
No.
It's not timed to our. It would be, it would be nice if they timed and gave the, the raise this year for next year, but what they're doing is giving the raise next year, for next year, and where our budgets are already kind of locked in place.
Yeah.
So that's part of what's causing our, our financial problem this year, there's, there's a section of that where there was a couple that got some fairly large increases this year. And again, we, we would never budget.
Been anticipating.
Five percent, we would have thought was high, you know, but, you know, one, I think was up by 50%.
That's right, that's correct.
So, you know, that could go there. So I think the two major components on, on the, well, there's three components to the special ed, special ed budget change overall. First one, we, we just spoke to you about as far as the salary changes in our internal programs. The second two is the out-of-district. It's a round number at a million dollars right now because we're going from 2.3, but the reality is, even with this move-in today, we're probably going to start to exceed that number already. And, you know, we were up only, we only left ourselves about $40,000 figuring that that was going to be our increases.
Right.
That we were going to have to cover in the process. So we're making up the 400,000 this year, that's not in this budget, so as a comparison, you don't have that 400,000 sitting there, and another 600,000, but what we're seeing is going to be next year's enrollment that hits us. And that's where the million comes from. Transportation, as I said, is up about 360,000 based on going from the 23 up to the 39, I mean, the 33 to, to the 39. And again, you're looking at about 25,000 per child in our transportation of it. We only have one residential, and the rest of them are all transported on a daily basis, and, and, you know, that's.
And that's assuming fuel and all those costs stay.
Well, those are locked.
Fairly static.
With the, with the BIKO transportation, we have a three-year contract, so we're locked right now.
So we can budget on that.
Yeah, so.
Degree, shorty, good. Okay.
Four, and I know it probably varies, but four move-ins. In what cases they reevaluated in-house versus the, I mean, yeah.
Just by regulations, every three years, a student is, is, has a reevaluation and is determined at that point in time what their IEP, their education program is going to be like. And at that point in time, we always try to do the least restrictive. So if a student is, is able to move to one of our programs because it's, it's more appropriate, we do do that. We usually, generally, I would say, speak, we, we have students return to our districts one to two to even three a year.
Okay. And is there, are there cases where we don't stick to the three years?
Yes. If there's something that's happening, if a student really is progressing really well, we move up their reevaluation date and have a reevaluation earlier.
Is that in consultation with the school and family?
With the family and the school, yes.
All right.
I think there's another issue that, that's important to understand in special education, and that is, I don't know what, how, all you look at it, but when you think, when you hear out-of-district, you know, is your immediate thought to a, a specific issue that a child has? The reality is, these children have a lot of issues that are different. We, you know, we have some children that are out because of social, emotional issues. We have some children that are out because of medical issues. We have some children that are out, you know, for SEL reasons. I mean, there's, there's just, it's, it's a very mixed bag. It's not one, you know, size fits all when it comes to this, this process. And that's quite honestly why they're placed out, because it is so broad, it's not like we could do something internally and have four or five that had the same specific issues where you could address it in a program.
Create a program.
So it's, it's very, you know, that's what creates this type of, of an issue. I've been here for eight years, we have never seen this type of a, a change happen so dramatically. We've had a couple hundred thousand dollars in a year. The other problem that, that, for budget reasons that, that is with this, is that we don't have any children aging out either for a couple of years. So that means we're going to retain these, all these children moving forward for the next couple of years, unless they move out of town. That's the only way that we kind of lose their responsibility. But, so this is, this is definitely a bigger issue than FY '21, if you will. I think this is, this is something we're going to be facing now for a couple of years. And with this rate of move-ins, I, I really, I don't even know how to explain to you where, where we go, if, if it continues this way. If we had another five next year, it's the math.
Right.
You just do the same thing again to yourself. I mean, it's not something we can control that way.
Yeah.
Is the age out level 22 years old?
Yes, yeah.
Across the board?
Well, unless they graduate.
Yeah, unless they, we see their diploma.
Right.
Yeah.
Which can happen and does happen. So, while we were giving credit last year for staying under the town's request, we were at 3.22, we're at 4.89 this year.
Easy presentation.
Which is the million seven sixty-four. I think the, the school district has been very responsible over the years as far as trying to control our cost as best we can, based on the needs of, of the children, but also based on the, the realities of the enrollments and everything else. This is, this is an anomaly that I think a lot of other districts have faced earlier than us. That's why the stabilization funds for special ed have come into existence. We, or at least I, always felt comfortable because we had one year in arrears of, of circuit breaker that we had used as safeguard. But that safeguard now has, basically, we could have wrote it in one year and have zero to go forward, which would be a big mistake as far as I'm concerned. But, you know, so I think the, the reality here now is this, this number is, is a real number that's, that's going to impact us as we move forward. Projection on enrollments, so you, as you can see, there's actually been, over the, you know, last number of years here, there's a growth in the preschool, a growth in the elementary coming back. We went from 900 all the way down to 816. Now we're back up to 865 on the elementary level. But you look at the middle school, we were at 841, we're down to 779. High school, we were at 843 back in FY '16, now we're down to 781. And you can see the out-of-district has grown from 24 up to the 38, so.
Which is going to be 39.
39. So I think the, the reality here is that we do have a little bit of a peak coming up on the lower levels, but they won't obviously hit the middle school and, and make a change there for a few years. And the high school is going to have a continuation of, of what we're starting to see at the middle school as we move forward as well.
And we've really responded at the elementary level, what we had talked about at the last meeting, and teachers changing grade levels based on those fluctuations, those bubble years and going from grade to grade.
Right.
But it, it does level off when you're in the same building.
Right.
So with three elementary schools, you can see more of a fluctuation, but when you're all in one building and they come to fifth grade, your class sizes are still at 22. You know, you might have some that are at 23, but again, very reasonable class sizes that many districts would love to have those class sizes. And when you have those specialty areas for those times a cycle for each of those, and you have 12 instructional, less, 12 less instructional periods, then we have to respond to that.
It's only responsible to do that.
So the, the issue here is, our salaries are actually very reasonable as an increase. This actually only represents a 1.29% increase on our budget.
Yeah.
So had salaries been the only, you know, issue here, we would actually be in, in very good shape.
Yeah.
But obviously, the special ed increase is really what's driving the bus. That's over the 3.5% by itself.
What is the special ed increase percentage-wise over?
3.57, I think.
Thank you.
So I think the, you know, the issue really is that, you know, you're looking at those, our, our increase in circuit breaker, we're coming from 500,000 up to that, you know, 690 this year. You know, that's obviously an advantage, a little bit of help, but not enough. And then we have a few other offsets as far as grants. Actually, it's made, the grant side of it's made up in three different areas. Our medco grant's slightly higher because they gave us money for more, a little bit more money for transportation. Our chapter one is slightly.
Title one.
What?
Title one.
Title one is slightly higher, and our 240 grant is slightly higher. So, all three of them, it takes to make up the 21,000, obviously, do a large increases by anybody.
Do we know if the new education funding bill that just passed is going to provide us with any additional funds for the coming year?
Well, from what we can tell, Foxborough will get probably between thirty-five and forty-five thousand dollars. So it's not going to be a huge kick. And, and again, that goes straight to the general fund. So until that really becomes, you know, a fact, it really isn't a major plus for us.
Okay.
As we just talked, the, you know, our revolving accounts stay pretty consistent. When we talk about our revolving accounts, what they're doing is, a lot of them are paying money towards some of our expenses and, you know, electricity and stuff like that. So obviously, you know, it's, it's things like our athletic revolving, our preschool revolving, our extended day revolving, off-duty transportation, adult ed and summer school. All those bring in money through different types of tuitions or different payments. And, and we take that money, portions of it, and we actually put it towards some of our expenses, whether it's electricity or gas, to run the buildings, because it's effectively like their rent to be part of that, of the program itself. And that's where that money's coming from. We just talked about the grants, obviously, as I said, the, the three changes there. Circuit breaker is a factor. And as I said, it's, it's anything over that roughly forty-six thousand dollars, we'll get a seventy-five percent back on that in the following year. So that's what makes up those numbers. We got to, we do have a, an increase, but the biggest part of it's coming from circuit breaker, but, which comes with a big cost, too.
Yeah.
We always give you the pie. Unfortunately, the pie has changed here. Minor changes on the, the smaller pieces of the pie. But as an example, the sped pie was in around the twenty-five percent range, and we were in the fifty-eight percent range on the general education. So that's the swing you'll see based on this current draft of the budget. So I think from our next step point of view, obviously, we need to sit with the budget subcommittee, very much detail, obviously, on the, each line within this budget. As you know, it's a nineteen-page budget report that's by building, by program. But, you know, I think the biggest thing that the school committee is going to have to decide, and that is, you know, where are you comfortable with us looking further? Because if we're currently over five hundred thousand, and that's a, you know, when you think there's no expense increases in this budget at all. Now, when you look at our detail sheets that you all have copies of, you can see three years of actuals, this current year's budget and next year's projection. You can see our actuals are pretty much mirroring what our expenses are costing us on an annual basis. And so that's why, you know, we're just told everybody we're going to hold expenses flat to get through here and, and try to move forward. Salaries are all based on every position moving, whether it's moving a lane a step and getting the, the two percent cola that was negotiated. Those are already all baked in here. So we have everything that we know of, of current staff existing. Any changes to staff, we obviously can't bake in because we just don't know what they are at this point.
And the, and the other part of that, too, is we're saying what we currently know of. So staff, if they're moving a lane, they have to let us know by January if I'm moving to my, the master's column or et cetera. So some of those we do know of because they, they let us know before January, but it's still up through January that they can let us know for the next fiscal year.
Through the end of January or January first?
January fifteenth.
Fifteenth, I believe, yeah.
So we can take it, that into account, though, before our actual vote?
Correct. And that's part of that continuing to monitor, monitor any kinds of changes.
We've been very close on, on that. Because if, you'll, you'll see under the district-wide page, which I think is page seventeen, of the detailed budget. Yeah. Let's see here. We actually carry a line for degree changes, which has got seventy thousand program into it. We've been extremely close to that number, year in, year out. So it's, it's a fairly good number. So again, you've got, you know, two hundred and seventy teachers across the district as far as the process. So you're always going to have people that are continuing their education, which we want them to do. And therefore, they may not have done it last year, but they're doing it this year and so on. So that's, that's why it stays fairly consistent. You know, if you had a, a, you know, a, a staff that was all top step, top lane, then obviously you're not going to have that. We have, our, our, our scatogram is pretty, you know, broad across all of the steps, all of the lanes. And so there's always room for somebody to move.
Okay.
You, you said this before, and I'm sorry I missed it, is of the current model increase, what, roughly what percentage of that is contractual obligations, not related, you know, not, not student services?
One point two-nine percent. One point two-nine.
And that's reflected, one point two-nine percent of the one point seven million?
The four point eight-nine.
Four point eight.
This percent?
Thank you. That's what it is.
Yes.
Okay. I was, I was trying to reference the one point two-nine percent back to which of the things, that's logic.
So that's how significant...
There's three point five, three, three point five, something.
No, three point six, I guess.
Thank you. And that's, that's reflective largely of the...
Increased special education.
So when we talk about how we were able to stay within the budget framework last year and feeling really good that we were able to do that, we're, we're not able to do that here. And that is even with looking at responding to those enrollment.
Right.
Those cuts there, those, based on those changes.
When is our budget subcommittee planning to get together?
Well, Rob and I need to discuss this and, and line up with Bill, right?
Yeah. Obviously, we'd like to have conversations over the next couple of weeks.
Before an actual committee...
We, we, yeah. So...
Which is January sixeenth.
Are, are you flexible, Rob?
Absolutely.
So we will, I mean, this is priority.
I know. So you and I'll have to...
So the hope is by...
I gave you a heads up.
Our next meeting, January sixth, that we're, we're reviewing it again?
Absolutely. And then our final vote is going to be on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Correct.
So we have to get... I think what I would appreciate, and, and actually, even I didn't talk about this, so I'm, it's probably a little bit out, but any kind of thoughts that you have individually, obviously you can't do it as a group, that you want to send me on an email to, to think about. I'd love to start being able to look at things and, and be able to answer those questions for the whole group. Because, you know, you might think of something that Rob's not thinking about when he's sitting with me, that I, I could at least bring up at those meetings and say, okay, this is something else that someone's concerned about, just so that I can start modeling it and understand...
So starting tomorrow morning, if you get a, have a question or...
Yeah, what the costs are and stuff like that. Because this, this is, as a process, this can take some real time, and there can be a lot of different things that I have to look at, which will take even more time to do, which I'm happy to do. That's not the issue. I think all of us are, you know, will do whatever we need to do. But, you know, if you have thoughts or concerns about a certain area or you want more detail on something, the sooner you give me that, the more, the more time I have to be able to build those things and really give you the breakdowns.
Bill, what about the liaisons from AdCom to the school department? Have they gotten in touch with you or are you planning to meet with them?
No, because they don't even have their pa, they don't have their packages yet or anything.
They don't have their packages yet, so...
From the town or anybody. So I would expect, we don't typically hear from them until close to the end of December, you know, as they're starting their process, so...
Yeah. Okay. Who are the, the ed liaisons this year? Do we know?
I just saw the schedule for when we're meeting with them, which is the fifth of February.
I don't know who the liaisons are.
We are definitely the fifth of February. Okay. Could everyone please put that on their calendars? That'd be great. All right. Okay. All right. Well...
So those are our next steps.
Yep. A lot to think about. Lot to think about. Anyone else? Any other comments before we move on?
I think from a, a process point of view, and obviously, we've always tried to work extremely close with the town. This is, this is an oddity for us to be, you know, even having to worry about what our number is. But I think the, the other side of that is, it's important that you guys settle on your number before the twenty-seventh. That's the number that sits in the town warrant. Obviously, there's an AdCom recommendation, there's a Board of Selectment recommendation, but your number can't be changed up or down. Well, it can be changed down over time, but it can't be changed up.
But it can never be changed up.
So it's, it's, you've got to kind of come to a lock-in on that and then let the other two departments or boards do their thing and have their recommendations as well.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the work so far and all the work that we have ahead of us to make sure that all of our students get the services that they need within our school system.
But, you know, and I, I want to thank the special ed group, too, because I think they've worked, I mean, we are obviously in communications with them...
Absolutely.
On a daily basis, based on what, what's been happening this year. But we've always had this, where we, it's like every month I meet with them, we go through all the out-of-district stuff, again, just so that I can make sure, you know, we're staying in, you know, within our budgets, or if we're not, you know, the sooner I know that, the sooner I have to, to start looking at other things. And obviously, knowing early this year that we're facing a problem, we already, you know, we've got nine months of a school year versus three months of a school year to try to figure it out. So, and we will figure it out on our side, but that's not going to be easy.
Well, we do appreciate all the thoughtful and deliberate work you're doing as well, Sandra.
And of course, I'll continue to work with Amy and Bill regarding this, because it's...
I think as long as we have the numbers to back up what, what we're required to spend, it is what it is.
Oh, it is. It's, does this...
And it's a challenge, for sure.
It's like the salary budgets where we have it, you know, by person, by everything. We have this, obviously, we can't share that, but we have it by, by student, by program. And that's what makes up the number.
Right. I mean, obviously, not particulars, but...
It's not a mystery number. It's not something we can just, you know, we just make up.
These are hard facts.
Got details behind it, so...
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Sandra, for coming to our meeting.
Thank you.
So our next item is the Borough School renovation project update.
I might get my own card. So this is a, you have a copy in your package of what is our normal, or will be our normal monthly update now that the construction has actually started. This actually comes to the school building committee, and it is the culmination of everything that's happened on a monthly basis. Obviously, this first month is kind of slow because they're just doing the site work. But this is a, a good trail to show you what progress has been made and what are we looking ahead for on a monthly basis. I think the site team that's out there, that's doing all of the site work is, is working very hard. We have a couple challenges that the project is facing, but I want to send some thank yous out already to our state legislators, especially Jay Barrows, for helping us. The two utility companies, and on every project I've, I've done for the town are typically the ones that, that can lag when you get into a process that you're trying to get something done quickly, just because of the, the amount of work that's involved with getting their work done. And unfortunately, we found at the very last minute that the gas line is within a few feet of the foundation for the new gym. And so obviously, we got to be very careful about that. And then we have our power lines, which are just slightly too close to the preschool side from a staging point of view when they go to, to put up the block walls. If the staging were to move or if the power was to arc, obviously, you have an issue. So we've been trying to get the utility company to do things, well, actually, CTA, the contractor, was trying to get them to do things. They finally, I think, cried foul that they couldn't get it done, so they asked us to get involved. I got ahold of Bill Keegan, he got ahold of National Grid right away. National Grid is now programmed to be out there sooner than they were going to be. They actually have just, they told us today that they finished the engineering, it's in review, so that's a positive. The gas company, which we thought was going to be the bigger issue, is actually supposed to be there tomorrow, to move, a temporary move for us to get it out of our way. So two very large scheduling potential problems. But it's still, the power one still could create some problems, although I don't think the contractor will catch up with us by the time they, they'll go there. They're just getting ready to pour foundations right now. They were doing, excavating the footings. They had to build up for the gym, if you remember, or if you know the site, the site goes and then it dips down in the front to where the playground is. Well, part of that had to be built back up to be, because the gym goes out that way. So they've been spending a couple of weeks bringing and fill, compaction, bringing and fill, compacting. That's all up to the right grade now. The compaction tests all have come back positive, so we're good there. So now they're getting ready to start doing foundation work and move that forward. The site is very different than it used to be, obviously, from a, you know, from trees are, a lot of trees are gone, but the grades are now more in what the final grades were going to be across the back and everything. We did run, as you can see in the pictures, in the middle picture especially, if you really take a look at that, it looks like a bunch of rocks, but look at the people that are in it as compared to the size of the...
They're rocks.
Those are boulders the size of trucks. They had to bring in a, a machine to actually break them up to get rid of them. So part of that actually is an extra to the project because we put in so much ledge, boulders that we expect to be on a site. This is a little bit larger than that, but there's unit pricing that's already negotiated that, that goes through. And where the boulders come from depend on, you know, if it's going to be in the foundation site, then we own it. If it's, if the, the site contractor decides to, to pull a little bit further outside of that, then they own it. So there's a lot of work that's done, and that's why we have our own project manager on site, because he's documenting every bit of that. They're measuring the rocks, they're, they're, you know, locating where they come from and stuff like that, so...
When it comes to boulders, would you like to own them?
No. They asked if we wanted them, we said no thanks.
We could do like, I get those for my classroom.
Can you move them?
No. If you buy, you have to move it.
Yeah. The other thing is, I, I also want to put to the DPW and the water department, they've been extremely good. Even the contractor's been, been kind of like shocked at, at the amount of cooperation this town has towards this project. Water department's been out there doing, you know, whatever needed to be done to help us with the water lines, because we have to move two fire hydrants. The hydrants are already moved, they're being chlorinated and being ready to put back online. You know, as far as the DPW, they, it's a very tight site. There's a lot of excess material that's going to need to be reused at some point in time. The, you know, Chris Gallagher basically gave them a site now near the town garage that they could dump all the excess material, and then when they're ready, they can sift it back out, get the, what they want to take, take back to the site, and then the town can have the balance. So it's, it's been a very cooperative environment at this point.
That's good.
Which is great, because again, you know, some of the things that cost towns a lot of money is the fact that you don't have these cooperative relationships, and then they end up, things take a lot longer and therefore you end up paying...
We have good people.
So it's, it's worked out well so far.
This is great.
Any questions on this, or?
Thank you for all your work you're doing.
Got some comments over there from the peanut gallery.
Have you, have you heard how it's working in the building?
I asked Michelle how the kids were doing with it, actually. Do you want to go ahead?
At first, there was like, paying attention to it, and like, they don't even know they're out there anymore.
Within a couple days, she said they were over it.
Yeah. And when I was in a classroom the other day, you know, just listening to it going on and watching the children, they didn't even pay any attention to it.
And this is the, this is the worst part of it, because this is the, this is the heavy equipment, you know, taking down trees, blasting up rocks, you know, doing stuff like that. Once we get into the foundation work, it becomes very quiet. It's, it's trucks coming in, dropping cement. And then when you get into, to, to, quite honestly, the biggest part of it is doing all the, setting all the block walls and stuff.
Yeah.
Just a bunch of guys out there on scaffolding, putting down block. It's, it's not a noisy adventure. So the only other thing is that the, we've moved the ceremony for...
The groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking to the...
January ninth.
January ninth at eleven o'clock. Weather permitting.
Frozen ground. Be frozen ground. Bring your hicks.
That's right. So, you know, again, I think we're going to give it a shot. We do have, both state reps have, have said that they can make it, and I'm just waiting for confirmation on the MSBA that they'll, they'll make it as well. It'll be nice, actually, because we, we won't be that far into the process, but they'll, they'll see that it's really kind of moving.
Moving along.
And if it is bad weather day, we know that the fourth graders can do a green screen.
I said, great, I love it. Fantastic. Good thinking.
That is really good.
Thank you.
That would work. That would work. Well, thank you for the update, Bill. I, I know at our school building committee meeting last week, I wanted to bring this forward and make sure everyone on the committee was fully apprised, and, and our viewers at home know where we're going with the project. And also, just a reminder, if anybody has any need for greater information, Michelle McCarthy is keeping the Borough School renovation website up to date. So if you want to look at these pictures at home, they're all up on the website.
Which is right off of the main Foxborough Public Schools website.
I just, just one question as you were talking with all this stuff. Have any of the neighbors made any comments on the work that's going on?
The, I spoke directly to the neighbor that's probably the most affected, which is the neighbor off of Coke Cassidy, who is actually tied right onto our driveway. He was very, very gracious as far as I was concerned. We did have a conversation at the school building committee the other day. Myself and Bill Cassidy, who's the vice chair of the committee, are recommending, and the committee agreed to, working with them to whether or not we put a fence right on their line on the back or some landscaping to help give them some privacy back. It turns out that their house is pushed very far back on their lot, so they have very little backyard. And they were actually able to basically enjoy the fact that our town lot was right there and, you know, we weren't using it. Well, unfortunately, now we are using it, so it's kind of restricted their backyard. So as a good neighbor, we feel that it was important. Had we had to go through the planning board, and this is what I explained to the building committee, had we had gone through the planning board, we would be doing this anyway. It would have been a requirement, but because of the requirements on that site, we didn't have to go through the planning board. I just think as a neighbor, we're all neighbors, we would want the right thing done. And of all the neighbors, they're the only one who's getting this impact this way. As far as the other concerns, we're trying to work, you know, parking is an issue, you know, for the construction side of things. We're trying to make sure that the contractor stays within the grounds as best possible. We do know that a couple of cars are parked across the street in the little thing, the little neighborhood there. We're trying to minimize that as much as we can. So we're doing everything we can, but if a neighbor does have an issue, they just need to get ahold of me and we'll work out whatever the problem is.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the Borough School project before we move on?
Again, thank you for all the work.
Our next...
Amazing.
Moving right along. Our next agenda item is an acceptance of donation from the Foxborough Soccer Club.
Yes. So at the last meeting, you accepted a donation for the girls' soccer from the boosters, as far as their coaches. And this is for the boys. That's what you'd be accepting for $2,000 for their assistant that would be really supported by the booster. So thanks to the boosters.
Excellent.
I move to accept the donation from the Foxborough Soccer Club.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the $2,000 donation from Foxborough Soccer Club? 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay. A little ahead of schedule, believe it or not.
Look at that.
See what happens when you start early?
I guess. I was only a couple of minutes early, but we moved right along.
Did.
Okay. So other matters? Anyone want to start?
The one that I was going to mention, we mentioned before with the groundbreaking ceremony on Thursday, January the 9th. I'm just really wishing everyone happy, healthy holidays in 2020 as far as the new year coming around. It just seems so funny to say 2020 when we think back to Y2K and we thought computers were going to crash and...
The world was going to fall apart.
Everything else along with that.
The sky is falling.
They weren't even born yet. That's what you were saying to each other, right?
We're talking about it in school right now.
That's so depressing.
And then my only other comment is the weather just does not seem to cooperate with its timing. That's not helping us very much as far as, we were talking about this with the timing just at the last school committee meeting, and here we are talking about it again. It's not supposed to start, my understanding, until around 5:00 in the morning?
Oh, 5:00 in the morning, not midnight?
Yeah. So then the tricky part there is that we don't have the 60-degree temperatures that we had the day before at the last storm. So the ground's cold and so if there's anything that takes place, it will be an early morning call, but we won't know.
Look at how they're listening to you.
They are listening.
You don't have to do your homework.
Yes. Sam had asked me, he said, my friends want to know. I said, you know, I said, I think they're going to do their homework tonight.
Well, the hard part is, you know, safety is our first priority. So when we think about the buses going out, whether, if it doesn't start until 5:00, we have to make the call by 5:00 because of our buses, particularly our students, you know, from Boston and the other transportation, as well as all of the buses. So it comes down to if it doesn't start until 5:00, are you in on the buses before, the majority of it before then it stops? So the timing of it makes it really, really tricky.
Well, you're not going to get too much sleep tonight. And of all the difficult decisions you have to make as superintendent, I think these are some of the hardest ones. But we all know as parents that you take our children's safety very, very seriously.
That's our first priority.
And that's your first priority. So we'll see what happens.
And also, too, regardless of the decisions that we ever make, it's always the parents to make the decision that they feel is of the best interest of their childrens.
That is true. Very true. All right. Debbie, do you have anything to add?
No, it does. With 2020 coming up, I hope the vision for everybody improves for our next year. And I'm a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year kind of person, but whatever your holiday is, I hope it's enriched and full of many blessings.
Thank you.
I actually had one other thing.
By all means.
Allison and I met with the facilitator for the Planning for Success model out of the Department of Elementary Education for what is a planning model for success. Strategic plan is what we think about in going forward and what that will look like starting after the new year, based on all of the work that has already been done. And so we've set dates, and that's going to look different, this planning process. It will provide opportunities for all stakeholders to be able to have a voice. But the planning sessions themselves will be during the school day. Six sessions, and that will start in January, and then it will go back and reach out and grab information from different stakeholders. But it'll also take into account all of the work that's already been done with the entry plan that I conducted, all of the stakeholders that really came as part of that process and our strategy for improvement. So we were really excited after meeting with the facilitator. She is a retired superintendent in the last year and a half. She's also one of the coaches in the superintendent's program, not mine. And she's led this process in a number of districts already. So really excited about that process.
Be excited to see it going forward and participate in it, I think, too, as well. Allison, do you have anything?
Well, I heard we might have more viewers this evening, so I'd love to share that our hashtag, #TheBorough02035, is in full swing on Twitter and a lot more teachers have been tweeting and administrators and athletic directors, everybody. And there is a Twitter boot camp at our next PD Day that teachers will be attending, so I expect even more. And just thinking of it from a perspective of, we get the benefit at these meetings to see the teaching and learning highlight, and we get to see a peek into the schools and classrooms. Twitter is a great way for anyone to see what's going on. And there are many great things going on. We had a visit from the MassSTEM Hub the other day to see our project lead the way in action, and they were doing a different dissection of the lamb's brain to find a tumor within the brain. And the STEM Hub tweeted about our school. So it really is great.
So the hashtag is?
Oh, my God.
#TheBorough.
Oh, it's cool.
#TheBorough.
A lamb brain tumor.
02035.
I think I'd wait for a different hashtag.
All one word.
All right. Excellent. All right. Brett, do you have anything?
I don't.
Richard?
Nothing.
Rob?
Two things. I was fortunate enough to catch the production of the Aristocats a couple of weekends ago, and they did an excellent job.
At the tail? Love that one.
Yes.
I was out of town. I wanted to see that.
I have a special place in my heart for Aristocats just because growing up, it was my grandmother's favorite movie. So I always loved that one, so they did a phenomenal job. And then I, if you were fortunate enough to go to the Winterfest concert last weekend, it was...
I was. It was phenomenal.
Of all of the concerts in the years that my kids have been part of the music program, it was absolutely one of the best that I've been able to, they were just outstanding.
You know, I had written that down myself. It was, I've attended, I can't even count how many concerts over the last few years, and it was an excellent, spectacular concert. Even when the Symphony Orchestra got interrupted because there were cars parked in the fire lane and there was a medical emergency, that everything turned out just fine, but when they were interrupted, they picked right up where they left off during Beethoven's Fifth, did not miss a beat. It was unbelievable. They did a great job.
Yeah.
I agree.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Wishing our seniors who are waiting for good news from schools much patience and good news moving forward on college admissions.
Well, and congratulations to several of our students who have received their early acceptances and are going to some fantastic schools. When we get our guidance, what is it?
Community report?
Community report. We're going to have lots of excellent schools to report out on. So so far, so good, and I'm sure everybody else is going to hear in due time, so it's all good. Bill, did you have anything else? Janet?
All set, thank you.
Kids? Nothing? I had one other thing I wanted to add. I attended the Fall Athletic Night last Tuesday, and I just wanted to thank our athletic director, Joe Cusack, and Chief Grace and Jen Rowe from the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office for a good presentation on social host liability and responsibilities of parents and just making sure that everyone is doing what they need to be doing to keep our kids safe in town. But it was great that they could come and speak to our parents and students at Athletic Night. So if there's nothing else, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, 5-0-0. Good night, everybody.